We'll roll.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Here. Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Here.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinis?
Here.
Trustee Milani?
Here.
Mayor Dodge?
Here.
Okay, we are starting the meeting at 7:54 PM. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, approval of the August 4th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinis?
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of August 4th, 2025.
Second.
So motion is second, any corrections or comments? Call a roll.
Trustee Katsinis?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Next, are we?
Yeah, we're going, I'd like to, well, let's take the next agenda item and then we'll modify the agenda.
Under Proclamations, Appointments and Presentations, Advisory Board Appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to consent the appointment by President Dodge as fully referenced below. This part is for reference only.
You could read them all, John, if you want to, or you don't have to.
Okay. Young Families Board, Kathy, Catherine Soklowski, Arish Zamara, Grounds and Recreation Facility Advisory Board, Ahmad Hamada, Jim Pedicora, Dan McMillan, Recreation Programming Advisory Board, Dan McMillan, AI and Information Technology Advisory Board, sorry, I think I just skipped, Conservation Sustainability Advisory Board, Economic Development Advisory Board, and Heritage Sites Advisory Board, Veterans Advisory Board, America 250 Committee, Sister Cities Committee, Ethics Commission, Board of Fire and Police Commission, and Police Pension Fund Board.
Second.
The motion is second, any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
What, I'm sorry, was there a question?
There were two of us.
Okay, Trustee Lee Platt, do you have a question?
Just quickly, this is, this is just the beginning of appointing, of appointments for those that have applied and are, there's still, this is an ongoing process, is that right?
Correct, we will be doing this over the next couple of meetings to flush out these advisory boards, so it's just getting started.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, there's two committees that I would wish to hold back and vote separately. One is the Ethics Committee. I know, I think we all received something in our email. I guess the question is, how does that factor into what we're doing tonight? If we're changing a board that was already existing? And also, who is the, our Ethics Officer? You know, we have the commission, but I don't think the Ethics Officer was named. Also on the Police and Fire Commission, most of, or all of our commissions are advisory. The Police and Fire, they actually promote, they demote, or pass judgment, or, you know, if somebody did something wrong and they hire. And I think it would be wise, especially in light of, you know, what's going on in another taxing body, to know who is on that board with a resume because they're in charge of hiring, firing, and passing, you know, if somebody makes a mistake, screws up discipline, so that, that is a concern to me. Because something goes sideways there, it's always the board members. And we really, I really don't know who they are.
I guess I can address that question specifically. On the Fire and Police Commission, these are reappointments of people who are currently on those boards.
They're all new, they're all, they existing people?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
That, Don Borling's name is placed here, you know, inappropriately, we're reappointing him as a police chaplain.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Borling, yeah.
And then in terms of the other question, George or attorney, do you want to address the question about the Ethics Commission? Who the Ethics Officer is? George?
The Ethics Officer continues to be Mr. Stortzman until the board changes. As a matter of fact, the, there was a complaint filed on Friday, and I think two, and they were forwarded to Mr. Stortzman per the existing ordinance.
So it's technically a reappointment of Mr. Stortzman, who, as you probably remember, used to be the village attorney.
But can he be Ethics Commissioner and the Ethics Officer?
No, he's the-
Because it says under Ethics Commission him, but I thought we had three people for the Ethics Commission in addition to the officer.
He, he's the officer, that's probably, that's probably, just like with Don Borling, it's probably just a-
Okay, I think our ordinance says we have, I looked at it, we have three members and an ethics officer.
Correct, ethics officer and then three members.
Okay, so we're missing a member here.
Yeah, and, and as was mentioned, this is just the first in a series of-
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? There's a motion and a second, please call a roll.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinis?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
We have a citizen who's registered to, to speak, Mr. Solak. We'll take this early.
Good evening. When the current slate of elected officials ran for office, they promised transparency, open dialogue, and adherence to proper process. But instead of transparency, we've seen a troubling pattern. During the last election, residents who asked reasonable questions about term limits, pensions for elected officials, or accomplishments over decades in office, were met not with answers, but with censorship. Some residents were reportedly blocked from official campaign websites simply for raising these topics. No public forums were offered before or after the election. And when criticism appeared online, pages like Inform Orland quickly stepped in to control the narrative, often by deleting or discrediting dissent. Soon after taking office, the village passed a civility pledge. While civility and discourse is important, many saw this move as a failed attempt to discourage public criticism. Several board members voiced concerns that this pledge could become a tool to suppress First Amendment rights. After all, who defines what's civil? Who decides which speech crosses the line? Free speech does not guarantee comfort. It guarantees the right to ask hard questions without fear of retaliation. And yet, retaliation seems to be exactly what some residents now face. Those who speak out against the present administration are targeted by robocalls, social media attacks, and public shaming. I would not be surprised to find myself in line for such treatment. If that happens, I hope our elected officials will rise above politics and defend my right to speak rather than remain silent. Most concerning of all is the village's recent legal action targeting the former mayor, a private citizen who now dares to speak critically of this administration. That legal effort, funded with taxpayer dollars, reeks of McCarthyism, silencing dissent through intimidation and lawsuits. Ironically, this same administration campaigned on ending, quote, "political lawsuits," end quote. What changed? It's fair to ask, what exactly is the village trying so hard to hide? Residents deserve a government that welcomes scrutiny, not one that fears it. True leadership is not about image control, it's about accountability. We must not allow our First Amendment rights to be slowly eroded under the guise of civility or order. We are neighbors, we are taxpayers, we are citizens, and we have a right to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. With the board's agreement, I'd like to consider a motion to take an item from Finance next, or do we want to make the auditor wait for three hours? What do we think? Is there a motion to take that item? Trustee Katsinis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the motion for the auditors to come up and speak and, and change the-
Take item, there you go. I think we all know what we're doing, is that good enough legally, Mike?
Yes.
All right, there's a motion.
Motion to take it out of orders.
Motion made, motion seconded, please call a roll.
Trustee Katsinis?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
So that is moving number 16, Finance, to the next item.
Floor's yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you for bringing us up on the agenda here, appreciate it. For the public, my name is Chris Frankenfield, I'm the Finance Director here at the Village of Orland Park. And I'm happy to say that we're catching up with our audits tonight, as a matter of fact. So I'm going to turn this over to our auditors from Secitch, whose name is Anthony Servini, and he take away.
Thank you, Chris, good evening, Mayor, trustees, appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Present the draft results of the 2024 audit here as we get near the finish line on issuing the 2024 report. As Finance Director Frankenfield noted, being able to help the village get caught up on the audits here. With the filing and completion of the 2024 audit, you will be caught back up with the comptrollers reporting deadlines from that standpoint there as well, so certainly have things moving in the right direction for you there. We'll highlight for you just a few items from that report that you'll see. If you've had a chance to review the packets, hopefully some of this information will seem familiar to you. See if technology wants to be my friend here.
Just tell us one note, and we'll-
There we go. So as a result of our audit, we will have the following reports issued, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the ACFOR as it's referred to. This also includes the, what we call the Tax Increment Financing, the TIF Compliance Examination on the village's Main Street Triangle TIF there. Please, report that we'll be issuing unmodified opinions on those, I'll go into more detail on that in just a moment. We'll also issue our Auditor's Communication to the Board of Trustees, a separate document there. Along with that, there are two other reports that are required, not listed here. The first being the Annual Comptroller Report filing there. That basically is an aggregation of certain information from your Annual Comprehensive Financial Report that gets included as part of that comptroller filing. And then finally, the state also requires, under the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, or GATA, the filing of your consolidated year-end financial report. Those will be the reports that we issue there. Within the report, the Independent Auditor's Report will be on the first component, the first page of the financial section that you'll see. Again, please to present that we will be issuing a clean, unmodified opinion on the village's financial statements as of and for your fiscal year ended December 31st, 2024. That clean, unmodified opinion, as a reminder, is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors. It means the financial statements based on our testing are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. For the village, as a reminder, those generally accepted accounting principles are set forth by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and management is ultimately responsible for the content of this report. Our responsibility as auditors is to issue an opinion. This year, the subject, the village was subject to generally accepted auditing standards, or GASS as they're referred to. Those are set forth by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, or the AICPA. One thing you may notice, a difference in the opinion from this year versus the 2023 and 2022 reports is that you are not subject to what's referred to as generally accepted government auditing standards, or the GAGAS, or Yellow Book standards, there's various names for those as well. Those standards will apply based on the village's combination of federal and state funding. So during 2024, those federal and state funding thresholds were not reached to be, to have you subject to, we call that GAGAS opinion there. So just look here, noting the differences between the opinions from one year to the next. Key takeaway here, again, the issuance of that clean, unmodified opinion. Additionally, within the report, if we, go back here to the management's discussion and analysis, this will immediately follow the Independent Auditor's Report. I always encourage trustees, if you're speaking to constituents throughout the village here, if you look at nothing else within this document, or if you're talking to folks who are looking to take a 200-plus-page document and get the Cliff Notes version, this is where you can direct them. The MDNA is the executive summary, it includes a great analysis of 2024's activities, 2023's activities, as well as management's explanations for why those figures have changed from one year to the next. So a lot of context provided there. Following the MDNA, you'll come to the management, or the governmental funds balance sheet. The governmental funds balance sheet is the balance sheet that you're used to seeing in terms of your operational on a day-by-day basis. So your statement of net position and statement of activity is in the report, really intended to present kind of an economic perspective, a full picture. The general fund, in this case, the presentation on the governmental funds balance sheet, this is really what you're looking at in your general fund, your regular operating funds here. The number I'd encourage you to look at here is the highlighted figure there at the bottom, your unassigned fund balance in the general fund, 25.5 million. That equates to about 44% of your general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2024. That's indicative that you have a healthy fund balance reserve in the general fund. That healthy fund balance reserve is in compliance with the village's fund balance policy as well, so you are compliant with your established policy on that as well. One of the questions we often receive in terms of why having that fund balance, or why having that amount as a reserve there, obviously, property taxes are a large source of revenue for most municipalities here in Illinois, so it's part of that process there. The timing of when you receive those property taxes, this allows you to have that reserve there and cushion, also allows you to weather sort of any economic impacts there, as particular state shared revenues or other items may ebb and flow from one year to the next. A few pages back from there, you'll find the financial statements for the governmental funds income statement. So I presented here kind of all of the funds that are impacted here. Really, overall, the net change in fund balance here, your general fund had a good year, just under $4.7 million of an increase there. Capital improvement, the village did have significant capital expenditures in fiscal year 2024, so you do see a drawdown of those balances there. So overall, your fund balance has decreased by about $15 million. Again, primarily driven by the spend on those capital dollars that were issued, bond issues in prior years, and other amounts that were set aside for that capital spending. Your proprietary funds, your enterprise funds, these are intended to be self-sustaining funds there from both a debt and a operations standpoint here, capital needs as well. So your net position for your water, for your water and sewer fund have reported unrestricted balance of $20.9 million there. Your unrestricted balance in your commuter parking was $164,000. Again, indicative there that you have positive, positive unrestricted net positions there, indicative of the strength of those particular funds there. Certainly, commuter parking, a much smaller in scale compared to that there. Monitoring that, that has had to receive some transfers in, obviously, you had a market shift as most communities who have any sort of, you know, train or commuter activity there, just a change in terms of how that occurred, dating back to the COVID days there. Overall, for your change in net position though, a strong year for the water and sewer fund operationally, essentially a break-even fund after the transfer in to your commuter parking fund. One item I always like to just highlight for, for the board in presentations is just your funded status of your pensions here. So the village participates in three pension plans, the IMRF, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Regular Plan, the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Plan Personnel, which is winding down, there's no longer any active participants in that plan, but the residual folks that are participating in that, as well as your police pension fund. As you'll see here from the top line, you have 86.75%, 89.4%, and then 73% funded status for each of the respective plans. 5% increase is there for IMRF from one year to the next, about a 1.4% increase for police pension fund. So again, the police pension fund now is part of the overall consolidated plan at the state level for that there as well. So the investment decisions are all being made at the state level there. So hopefully you'll continue to see the, you know, funding increase as the, you know, the types of investments that the police pension fund is able to invest in is expanding there as well. I did mention we'll be issuing an unmodified opinion on the TIF compliance report as well. That's an examination report required under Illinois compiled statutes. And then finally, within our auditor's communication documents, just a few highlights here for you. We had no difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management. We have no adjusting journal entries that were required as part of the audit process there. That's a testament to Chris and his staff for their work in terms of preparing for the 2024 audit as part of that process there as well. We did have two what we call past adjustments, past adjustments don't reach the materiality level that they need to be adjusted there, and we discussed those with management on a cost-benefit basis as to whether or not those are going to add value there. One of those relates to a GAZB standard, GAZB Statement 96 for subscription-based IT arrangements. The other relates to the implementation of a new standard this year for compensated absences. Finally, the last item noted here, just one internal control matter. This is actually a continuation of an amount that was identified during the prior year and discussed as a part of the 2023 reporting there, just related to the Parks Fund revenue recognition related to amounts that are received in advance of the programs there. Expect that that will not be an item that is repeated in subsequent years. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my comments this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions from yourself or other members of the board, thank you.
Any comments or questions, any comments or questions in the board?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I just want to say thanks in a hard time when it's hard to find people in this industry to work. You guys have done a quick and efficient job, and, you know, we're just happy to be in compliance with everything and get caught up all along. I mean, staff and all that, you know, seems to be helping out more and more, so it's, I think it's a great relationship, I hope it can continue.
Any other comments or questions? I'm, I guess this will be a Chris or, or you from, from an auditor's perspective, which is broadly, you see a lot of other governmental entities. Sorry, I have a lifesaver because I'm coughing. What else should we be thinking about?
First, I mean, certainly I would say that the village has done, you know, a heavy lift the last several years in terms of getting caught up on these audits there. So I think, looking forward to determine what is important on a go-forward basis there. You know, with that heavy lift, there has been a lot of transition within the Finance Department, personnel, accounting systems, internal control processes, things of that nature there. So my biggest recommendation to the village at this point, we need to continue to monitor those things, ensure that from an integration standpoint, that the various modules, as you're going through and looking at different components to your ERP system-
That's the software part of it.
Software, correct, the software side of things there. Ensuring that those reconciliations are being done one on a timely basis, being done, you know, ensuring that the accuracy of that information is there, being able to have that timely information for financial review by the Finance Department, by the manager's office, and then ultimately by you, the board, is important to being able to do that. So hopefully, you know, monitoring that and looking at those processes will be able to, you know, continue down the path that you've been on in terms of getting things kind of back on track.
I guess Chris or George, what kind of changes have you made? And kind of what were, what were, let's just put it out there, right? What were some of the challenges we've run into over the past couple of years that were now passed? What did you, what, what happened and what have we changed?
Sure, so there was, at one time, we had, with the early retirement incentive, there were a lot of staff that had been here for many years, they were, they took the option to retire early. So a lot of our institutional knowledge left out the door with that retirement. So with that, new, new staff came in, they weren't really trained properly on what was happening to keep things rolling. So over the last few years, we've dug into this and we've figured out what needs to happen, what needs to be done, fixed some processes, made it more efficient, and, and essentially, we're able to catch up with the cash reconciliation and move forward. At, during that same time, we're implementing a new financial ERP. So we're now in the Tyler Munus module of Tyler Technologies. So with that, it was kind of hard to implement financials when the cash wasn't even reconciled. So with that, it was a lot of juggling different balances and trying to figure out where we actually are at. So we're there now, and we're able to work with that. At the same time, our auditors for 2021 were going through a merger with another company, so that was another delay. So it was a bit of our, a bit of the side of the village also with the auditors that that signed too. So we did wrap up the 2021 eventually, and then we went with the RFP and went with Secitch.
So playing it back, we had an auditor that was going through some challenges of their own. Cash balances or reconciliations, I think you said, wasn't being done. We had a early retirement, and we had a software migration.
Correct.
Okay, all, any one of those could be a problem.
And then a perfect storm with them all together, yes.
And then from the auditor's perspective, you know, it's clean, it's behind the village now, we're staffing up in finance, some of these things are no longer going to happen, correct?
I mean, the expectation is that the foundation has been laid for, you know, getting caught up and being able to continue to have those things done on a timely basis there. So being able to, you know, address those items that were there, from what we've seen from a bank reconciliation standpoint is one example, is that the timeliness has improved significantly there. The documentation related to, you know, internal controls and the new system there. So I would say all of those things are, you know, a continual work in progress, but from where we started and to where the village is at today, certainly have, have made a lot of strides in terms of that and are positioned for, you know, timely, accurate financial reporting on a go-forward basis.
One, just open up any other questions, or I don't think we have an actual.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
There was a mention of new staff not properly trained. What are we doing differently in that regard?
Well, we've kind of already beat that, that obstacle. So we now have gotten into the understanding from management above, because I've been here three years. So through this time, I was also learning the processes of Orland Park and seeing all the different systems that we're working with. Because even though we are in a new financial system, we also have another system for recreation and parks. So we are continuing to, we're not changing that, so we're continuing to work with our software and work with that and come up with our reporting. So with that, just a period of time has educated us getting into these and understanding, you know, what needs to be completed and then reviewed for efficiency and training our new staff as we've hired them on.
Okay, I get it, it's not that there wasn't a good training process, it was, people left, new systems came in place, so almost nobody knew exactly how to do things. And now we have a good training process in place, not only because we have some people who know how to do it to start with, but because you've had the time to figure it out. And so there's some systems in place, say, a new person comes on. They're going to come in and they're going to be able to have examples, manuals, whatever, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
One thing I like to do in my management style is to show my, my employees that I can do the same job they can. So I go in there, I show them, I do it, I figure it out, I show them, what did I do? This is how I did it, and then you're going to continue doing it for me, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, Trustee Katsinis?
Just really quickly, I know you hate to talk bad about somebody who's no longer here, but Kevin was having a challenge in the, in the role, for sure. I mean, he was put on a PIP, and then we had another PIP that somebody else was on as a result of Kevin being on a PIP. So it just felt bad for him. Do you feel like you have enough help to do the job you need to do?
Yes.
Hey, Chris, hang on.
We're talking about personnel issue.
I'm sorry, but you feel like you have the help, the staff, to do your job?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, at this point, yes. We have a vacancy for a budget manager. With that, we should be in good shape.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Because if not, we'll need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I make a motion. I move to accept the fiscal year 2024 annual comprehensive financial report, ending December 31st, 2024.
Second.
There are motion and a second. No further comments or questions. Call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leefle.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, yes, we're going back to the regular schedule. Accounts payable, accounts payable August 5th, 2025 through August 18th, 2025, seeking approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leefle.
I move to approve the accounts payable August 5th, 2025 through August 18th, 2025, in the amount of $3,927,457.99.
Second.
There are motion and a second. Any questions? Call a roll.
Trustee Leefle?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
I abstain because I have a business relationship with someone on the payable list.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
It's approved. We will now proceed to the consent agenda. A, payroll for August 1st, 2025, seeking approval. B, special event permit for Orland Park Chamber of Commerce's Women's Network Committee event for approximately 100 people. C, special event permit for Price is Right casting call at Steinhoffel's, approximately 250 people. D, annual Parkway tree pruning program, phase one. E, a resolution designating an area as blighted and in need of renewal for 14497 John Humphrey Drive. F, a resolution supporting and consenting to a Cook County Class 7B real estate tax assessment classification for 14497 John Humphrey Drive. D, Dick's Sporting Goods House of Sports term sheet approval. H, transition of health retirement account to a new administrator. I, Tyler Technologies' change order for utility building implementation.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to approve items A through C and E through I of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Before we call a roll, brave gentleman in the back from Steinhoffel patiently sat with us. Is there any questions for them before we call the roll?
Come on down.
There you go. Good luck with the event.
Come on down.
Please call the roll, and thank you.
Okay. So, Trustee Malani, I just want to make sure it's A through C and then E through I?
Yes.
Okay.
Leaving out D.
Okay. Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leefle?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Okay. So at this time, item D, annual Parkway tree pruning program.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leefle.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a contract or agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Smitty's Tree Service, Inc., as the low-cost qualified responsive proposal for the annual Parkway tree pruning program, phase one, for a cost of $442,220 for 2025, excuse me, and yeah, a cost of $321,405 for 2026, and a cost of $271,520 for 2027, with the option to extend the contract for three additional years, 2028 through 2030, for the cost of $145,350 for 2028, a cost of $217,190 for 2029, a cost of $142,196 for 2030, for a total not to exceed $1,539,710, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Leefle?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Okay. Proceed to Public Works, Humphrey Neighborhood, First, Second, and Third Avenue road condition.
George, there's a couple of options before we get started. Do you want to give a brief synopsis, and then Joel will have obviously questions for you?
Yeah. So if the board recalls, the last committee of the whole, there was a discussion on three potential options for First, Second, and Third Avenues. One is to leave it as is following the recomite application. The second was a seal coating, similar to what would be done in a commercial parking lot. And then the third and final was a complete overlay of the seal coating. So the option one, do nothing, there's no additional cost. Option two, the seal coating was around $10,000. And the, the third option, the complete overlay, was approximately $51,000. So just seeking direction from the board on which route to take. If it goes with the seal coating option, that would have to happen next year because the recomite is, is already penetrated into the asphalt. So we'd have to let it weather a little bit.
Realistically, the options are do nothing or get rid of it, right?
Or overlay. Yep. Yeah.
Because delaying for the, for the sealant, I'd be concerned that the sealant would work. So, you know, this is, we need to make a decision. There's obviously a number of residents who are concerned. I think everybody's gotten a copy of this. You know, is there a preference for the board? Do we want to put a motion on the floor and discuss it, or do we want to have an open conversation and pick a solution?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leefle.
I only see two options. I see that it's either recommending no further action or mill an overlay on the agenda.
Right. That was, realistically, that was presented because I, I think there's technical issues with the sealant actually working.
Right.
Is that fair, Joel?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I do have a question about a possible other option. This is something I brought up to George, I think when we met last week or week before. Back in, I think, 2015 or 16, we had a second product that we were looking at called, I think, Bio Restore or Bio Seal. It was a biologically safer alternative that didn't require a aggregate. The problem with it is you need to shut the road down for two hours after laying the particular product. So I wonder if this is a way that we could accomplish what we're trying to do with something that's safer, or, you know, maybe as a third option here. And I don't know what the cost would be. Like I said, I was looking back into like 2016 prices and costs on this.
I think the, I think that other, the microsealer options is something that's going to happen over the winter about how we proceed into the future. But for, for First, Second, and Third Avenue, I don't think we can, I don't think we can put another sealer on top of the sealer.
Yeah, that's, I didn't know if it was, it was.
It really provides no additional benefit, even if we try to add that on top of what we already currently has.
Okay. Yeah. Because I think it's had like a four to seven year extension.
Well, I'll look up the product a little bit better, but, yeah.
I can point you in the right direction if you do. Sorry. Any other comments or?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Just very quickly, Joel, could you describe what has taken place on First, Second, and Third? Because we do have residents here that are still expressing concern.
Right. So after the board, one of the things recommended was that we clean the road. So we did that. Our streets teams went out there. They hosed down any of the sand, trying to get out of any of the cracks. And then, so that definitely helped with a lot of the road, any remnants of that sand. Obviously, the report he's showing, he's saying that there's still sand there. We can't get everything, but we got a majority of it done.
And Joel, is it sand, or is it, what is it exactly that was?
It is a limestone sand, pretty typical for most construction that we, and we know that residents utilize, or sorry, construction utilizes. But it actually picks up the, some of the leftover recomite. And then that's why the sweeper came around and picked that, picked that up when they cleaned the first couple of times.
And Joel, do you feel like if any got into the storm sewer, any issue with that?
None. Obviously, the, you know, all kinds of debris gets in storm systems all the time. So it's just a little bit amount of sand, it doesn't matter.
So how would you describe the road condition right now?
The condition right now, I believe we have those many years, probably seven, eight years. We'll, we'll see how it goes for the wear and tear. We'll be evaluating with the next scan of the roads. That'll give us a good indication of how the road is doing. And then that will determine which, when the roads would be done for a mill and overlay down the, down the road.
And what is your recommendation on those two options?
I would do option one for Leefes.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
George, the, if I understand it right, in '24, those streets were assumed that we're going to mill, is it mill and overlay? Is that the phrase?
Uh, yes.
And then somewhere along the line, we changed our mind and we went with the recomite product.
That's correct. So the original plan had a, had blocked it all off as where it was going to be done. And then, then the team, when it actually came time to start planning and which streets, they, they noticed that this road condition, the road there is, the condition is very good relative to the other ones. So the ones that were done went with the resurfacing or the mill and overlay. And this one was a microsealant just to prolong that good condition.
Trustee Leefle.
Mr. Mayor, so it was compared, it was, those three roads were in good condition compared to the other roads in the same subdivision. Is that, that's what I, that's what, so there, these are old roads in the first place, though, right? I mean, when was the last time any of these roads was redone?
Joel?
Yeah, I don't, it's, we, I think it was, Lawler, you mentioned it was like 2009 or around that timeframe. But when we do the scan of the roads, it actually identifies which roads are less wear than the others. The other ones were orange, these were in the green and yellow ranges. So demonstrating that, even though they have age, age is not the main factor. It's really the, how the scan is looking at the road of how it's deteriorating. And therefore, we rely heavily on that scan to, so what I'm trying to tackle is all the orange ones in the village, red ones too, especially, but orange ones are the next level. We have lots of orange, and so we have to kind of pick and choose and, and look for, like Catalina, we delayed it because that's all orange. And we delayed it so we can get the Waterbean project finished. Then we're going to pave those roads. Similar, there's a lot of other orange areas in the village that we're trying to tackle. That's why when we saw the three streets that were not orange, we realized that why mill and overlay? Why spend the money where those other orange streets in the village need to get done before these streets?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
Joel, so all the streets that were done the last couple of years in the road program, they are all orange rated roads?
Yeah.
Has there been any exceptions?
Not that I know of. I mean, if, if you have like a stem or something, a little stem, and the whole subdivision is getting done, we maybe grab that one street just because the entire subdivision was getting done, right? It doesn't mean, you come back to get one little dead end or something like that, just didn't make sense. But, yeah, when we do the subdivisions, they're, they're, that's poor rating.
The, George, the, we didn't, I don't know how much the recomite cost, but we had originally budgeted a certain amount of dollars to do these streets that we chose not to spend. So that's in the budget somewhere, correct? So this is not, if we go with option two, this is not an unbudgeted expenditure per se?
Yeah.
It's going back to the original plan.
Yep. So when we do, when, when we did the, the road resurfacing program, we had a general idea of how much we can get done for the $6 million that was budgeted. What they'd spent for recomite was a little over $4,000 to put that down.
Thank you. And I guess just, you know, in terms of where my head is at, I lean towards option two, because I think in the history of this, there was, we, we, I think you could make a case that if you're going to go do a subdivision, do the subdivision with the road improvement project, right? There's mobilization costs, you're in there, we had budgeted, you know, go ahead and do this. I certainly get being data-driven in terms of the scans. But I also think that as I've learned about this issue, I don't know if we, the Village of Orland Park, handled it as well as we could have communicating that change, and then what the impacts were going to be to the residents by doing recomite. And I think we had other products that we could have chosen. So I'm not a fan of necessarily just saying, okay, let's just go find another 50, 60 grand to do that, but it was originally in the budget. And I think on this one, let's treat it as a lesson for how we do the assessments, how we do the budgets, how we do these fixes. And I think what I react the most to is we changed our mind, and then there were problems with the way we executed.
Understood.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leefle?
I, I think that also, I think that when, I think what was notable to me in the course of all of these discussions with regard to these streets is that recomite has been used in other parts of Orland Park without issue, including my own subdivision. So if it's used, so now in this situation, it's, it's, there's a great deal, there are a great deal of issues with it. So I think that this, it probably, it may not have been the, I don't know, it may not have been the best course of action, but even if it seems like the good course of action at the time, it wasn't, I don't, I have my doubts that it was applied well, and that it could even do the job, you know, at this point, I don't know that the application could even accomplish what, what was intended, just by virtue of the issues we've had with the amount of, with just the amount of, the problems, the discoloration, the sands, that just, there's just been a lot that I have not seen, I've never heard of it before. So it must not have, so this is, to me, a kind of a more unique situation. And I, I would also go with option two.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I have generally go with the fiscally conservative option, but I do think the facts and circumstances here call for option two, because I think it's, you don't stop thinking out of the box and creatively about how to do things differently. But, and just with the items that have been presented to us, I think option two would be, and the quicker we do it, the better.
Just, Trustee Malani, Trustee Katsinas, we're just taking a quick consensus now before we put a motion. Option two.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to authorize the mill and overlay of First, Second, and Third Avenue in the Humphrey subdivision as a part of the village's existing road improvement program, contract with Lindell Brothers, Inc., excuse me, and direct the expenditure of already authorized funds within the contract to pay for same. And I authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
I think that was simultaneous. I heard stereo. So pick one, Mary. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
I'm going to abstain as I live on the street.
Trustee Lawrence will also second it.
Oh, there you go.
Aye.
Trustee Leefle?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Aye.
Option two. Proceed to Public Works Optimization Project, additional project design fees.
Mr. Mayor.
Just to lawler.
I move to approve the waiver of the competitive bid process in favor of a sole source agreement and authorize the approval and execution of a service agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Valdez Architecture and Engineering for additional project design fees for the Public Works Optimization Project for a cost not to exceed $95,433. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Question for you, George. When would we enter into this contract and what would be authorized?
So this, so this is just really, at this point, a lot of it, and Joel, you can chime in, is for work that has already been done, is that right, Joel?
Yes, we had to do some additional borings because the contours of the public works site started going into kind of the old marsh area. So we had to make sure the, the work, what kind of foundation design we had to do. And then also, we're trying to separate the project out with having the motor fuel tax. So they're doing some separating the design drawings as we speak to get that to bidding portion. So we can execute that right away.
And what Joel's referring to as the MFT or motor fuel tax is a designated, it's money that the village gets that has to be used for specific purposes. The original project has a new salt bin that's being built. The current one is corroding because of the salt. And that, that new salt bin will be paid for with MFT money. And so they're asked to, they have to separate the documents.
All right, so that we're all clear, the work's already been done, hence the request to waive the bid process. Are those two are tied together?
Yes.
Just making sure, I want it on the record.
And they're, the architecture firm that had done the work previously.
They're the existing, the existing firm.
How long have they worked with the village?
We did the MSA about 2001, and they've done a couple of projects for us with that.
2001, they've been contracting with us for 24 years?
Sorry, 2021, sorry, 2021.
They've done other projects for us?
Yes.
Which ones?
Specifically, the range, they also have done, they did the Mercedes, no, that's Williams, sorry.
Okay, that's fine, they've worked for the village before, I'll, okay, got it, thank you. We had a motion, a second.
Yes.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Just to leave that.
Did you announce it yet, I'm sorry.
No. Ready?
Okay. Next is the drone docking pad project.
I move in favor of participation in joint purchasing cooperative Omni Partners pursuant to contract number 02-139, and authorize the approval and execution of a vendor contract with Davecom Electric, Inc. for the drone docking pad project based on Davecom Electric, Inc.'s proposal number 25-167-26 dated July 24, 2025, for a total not to exceed the contract price of $36,100. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Proceed to engineering, 143rd Street widening, Water Main relocation design services, Wolf Road to Southwest Highway Phase Two dash final design engineering services, contract amendment, change order number four, and addendum B.
Mr. Mayor. Pretty straightforward issue, go ahead, John.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of change order number four and addendum D to the original contract dated August 16, 2022, with Trans Systems Corporation of Shawarmburg, Illinois, for the 143rd Street widening from Wolf Road to Southwest Highway, Phase Two Design Engineering Services, to increase the total not to exceed contract amount by $75,722 to $7,096,508 for the work outlined in the proposal dated June 26, 2025, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts and change orders subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Healy.
There's a motion, a second, just a couple of quick questions, Krishid. Clearly, we nor the state have all the money lined up for the eventual construction.
That is correct.
So this is what we've always done in Orland Park for many decades, which is front the money for the Phase One, Phase Two, to put us in a better place to get state monies for road projects. Fair?
Fair, but generally, we put in Phase One money. We generally get, or for the last several years, we have gotten money for Phase Two.
Yep, great. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I just want to say it's thanks to Krishid and his staff's hard work why we get Phase Two paid for with grants. They do an outstanding job of securing, getting to know what's out there, but also securing them for the Village of Orland, to that I say thank you.
All right, motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Moving on to recreation and parks, Dugan Park redevelopment discoping.
Mr. Mayor.
Just to lawler.
I make a motion, I move to approve, choose option recommended by the committee of the whole, option D. While I'm getting to it. Four lighted courts behind the sportsplex, two unlit pickleball courts at Dugan Park. Dugan Park tennis courts remain unlit, no restroom building at Dugan Park. Dugan Park North parking lot with 64 spaces per code. Nine plus lighted at Centennial Park ice rink location. And all primary renovation elements included, including a playground, 20 by 20 pavilion, half basketball court, a 360 by 210 soccer field, a zero baseline baseball field, two bocce ball courts, sledding hill, parking lot, and landscaping improvements and detention basin. And to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Hold on. And authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
Are we sure we're done, John? There's a motion, a second, any comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Evergreen View Park conceptual plan and OSLAD grant resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Just to Malani.
Move to approve and authorize the execution of professional service agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Planning Resources Incorporated for the development of a conceptual plan, budget estimate, and assistance in applying for an open space lands acquisition and development OSLAD grant consistent with the proposal dated August 6, 2025 in the amount of $10,700 plus a contingency of $1,500 for a total not to exceed contract amount of $12,200 and to authorize the village manager to sign the OSLAD grant program resolution of authorization form and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review and authorize the village manager to approve the change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
So motion, a second, is there any questions? Do we want to, any quick comments, like literally one minute?
I won't go through the slideshow, but the state opened up a new OSLAD grant period and are offering $54 million, so we're applying for $600,000 in support of this project.
Great, and just, I think on behalf of the board, thank you and staff broadly for, we always have to go after state money on this one, thank you. The motion, a second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Okay, proceed to Dugan Park redevelopment, Christopher B. Burke Engineering, LTD, change order number two and contract amendment B.
Is there a motion, a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Leaflet.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of change order number two and contract addendum B to the original contract dated October 7, 2024 and amended May 19, 2025 with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited of Rosemont, Illinois for design and engineering work for Dugan Park to increase the total not to exceed contract amount by $39,240 to $322,030 as outlined in the proposal dated August 11, 2025. And to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review and authorize the village manager to approve change orders related to this contract within the authorized amount.
Second.
Motion, a second, any comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Mayor, trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Passes. We will now go to non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business.
No one else has signed in, does anybody else want to address the board? Tracy?
Okay, board comments?
Trustee Katsinas.
I just wanted to put something on the record, I just have a concern with some hiring practices in the village that I would like to meet with you to go over at a time in the future. And we just have to make it available to all. Make sure jobs are posted, make sure we know when people are hired through our weekly update. And just pay attention to who we're hiring, thank you.
Just to Malani. Mike, your microphone's off.
Should I turn that on first maybe? I'm sorry. No, okay, so the special recreation program, the Owls bowling team participated in the Special Olympics District Bowling Tournament on August 9. The Owls once again excelled, they earned five gold medals, two silver medals, and two bronze medals. So thank you to everybody as always that help out with the program. It's, it's great to see the look on the athletes' faces when they're participating and the support that they get has just been phenomenal from, from everybody, so thank you all. Good night.
Trustee Leaflet?
Well, I would, I would certainly, I, speaking to trustee Malani's point, I do, I like to see what the Owls are doing. So I think it's really, I think it's exciting and fun. And I like seeing their dedication. And that leads me to the, again, thank you to the staff for putting together, you know, information and taking the time to do research and reconsider different options so that we can really truly come up with the best option for the residents, so thank you.
Trustee Healy?
On a night when you hear the thunder rumbling in the background, I want to prematurely thank Public Works for staying out all night to clear the roads and any debris or anything. We often take it for granted when we wake up in the morning and there's, everything works fine. But you guys are out all night making sure you do the best job you can for us. So that's over the years, you guys have done a great job, so thank you for that. And my other comment is, you know, just my condolences to George on the passing of his mother-in-law. I hope you have safe travels on your way to, to the services. Good luck, George.
Trustee Lawler?
No comments from me tonight, I think everybody's touched what I would have said, so.
Trustee Lawrence?
I want to thank again the residents who come before us to speak, who provide information to help us make decisions. Those who write to us or phone us likewise. The information that you provide to us can be helpful. And I would just ask one thing, that when you do provide information to us, if you can provide source documentation, it's really helpful. Because I'm taking what you give to me and trying to verify it and not always able to verify the information. So I love it when there's photographs and links to places on the internet or the naming of organizations and saying where at the organization's website something can be found. And for those who come and listen and who don't necessarily speak up at each meeting, I appreciate you too for being here to take back to the community the things you learn here and hopefully get some of them excited about giving their input. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. Tonight, we did a couple of big things. Very pleased that we had as frank and as fact-focused a discussion as we did on the audits. It was pretty clear over a couple of issues that people are heard. And we take all voices into our decision-making and we kind of can go back and forth in a freewheeling set of dialogues, which is a very helpful process of a deliberative body like this. I want to emphasize that people are heard as we go forward, we're going to keep doing that. Also, just a very brief note, Tad, Dean and I attended a conference with Google where they were presenting some pretty slick applications of artificial intelligence. And we had a long conversation coming back, trustee Malani, we're going to pull you into some of these as well because there's no reason why Orland Park can't be a go-forward testbed for application of AI in our internal processes, but all of our customer-facing applications, not the least of which in natural language queries. Why can't people get what they want from our website as opposed to a website architected by people who understand government for people who don't? So there's a lot of work in progress, so that we're going to test that with the AI and Technology Committee. So I appreciate Tad's special call out, what you're doing to kind of keep, keep us out there. Mike, you'll probably appreciate this. I'd love us to be leading, but not bleeding edge on the technologies. Right, yeah, exactly. And so just pretty slick applications, and we're going to keep infusing that in what we do, both externally facing and internally facing. And then, as I think trustee Healy, as you noted, George, you know, I know it's been a long journey for, for you and your family and, you know, can't say, the trip to Poland has a purpose. Hopefully, your, your family and your wife are doing okay with everything. So good luck on that trip, and we'll see you when you get back.
We do have a need for executive session tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for discussion of the minutes of closed meetings, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific village employees, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the village, pending litigation against, affecting, or on behalf of the village, or when found by the boards that such action is probable or imminent.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Okay, we are convening at 9:01.